And to welcome everyone here tonight, let's have our roll call, please. Next, we will have the invocation by Mr. Gars and the pledge by Mr. Coulson. Let's stand, please.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you this evening for your many blessings upon us. We thank you for the opportunity of assembling together this evening as a county. We pray, Father, that you might be with each citizen that is represented this evening. We thank you for those that are here in our audience. We pray, Father, that you might bless each one of them. Bless those who are also viewing us by way of television. Father, we pray that you might be with us as a board as we deliberate this budget and this ordinance, that we might do that which is best for the citizens that we represent. These blessings we pray in your holy name. Amen.
Please, the like, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to tell everyone that we've got two public hearings tonight, so there's a possibility that we're going to be overcrowded as meets the regulations. And we've got two sheriffs in the back who have the capabilities. I see they're bringing some chairs in now. If that will suffice, good and well. But if not, we've got other areas in the building that you could wait and participate in however you see fit to do that. Sheriff, do you have plenty of room right now? All right. That having been said, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? All right. Before she commences that, I'd like to say this. This is a topic that we've been working on several months, several years, but not to the extent we have in the last few months. It's a matter that needed attention of this board. We've been able to do that through and by the support of the communities and by the support of all people that have been before this board and discussed the safety issue that is involved in this matter. But just by way of an illustration of what I mean, will all of those that are in favor of the ordinance stand up, please? All right. All of those that are against the ordinance stand up. I'm talking about the canine. Okay. All right. Well, I know we've got some others, too. But that having been done, Michelle, please.
Good evening. I am Michelle Whaley, Pitt County's Animal Control and Shelter Director. Just to give you a brief reminder of our timeline, on March 10th, the staff presented an analysis to you of the canine control proposal. It then, on March 26th, the Animal Control Advisory Board reviewed the proposed ordinance and suggested minor revisions. And there are many members of the Animal Control Advisory Board present in the audience tonight, so if they want to raise their hand and just let you know who they are once again. Also, on April 7th, the staff came back and presented the canine control ordinance to you. And in between that, we also had two presentations made on behalf of citizens in the county. So the purpose... Let's see if I can get this going. The purpose of the ordinance is to promote public safety and responsible pet ownership by addressing the problem of roaming dogs in the unincorporated areas of Pitt County, reiterate citizens' right to protect their persons and/or property from aggressive roaming dogs as necessary, and further promote cooperation between Animal Control and the Office of the Sheriff. The provisions are it applies to unincorporated areas of Pitt County. Dogs are not allowed to be off the owner's property without restraint as defined in the ordinance, and hunting dogs are excluded. Penalties: civil penalties imposed for noncompliance. First violation, $50 fine plus reclamation and boarding fees. Second violation, $100 fine plus reclamation and boarding fees. And then each succeeding violation after that, $250 plus the reclamation and boarding fees. Warning in lieu of the penalty will be an option, and penalties will be payable within 72 hours of citation issuance. Also, impounded dogs shall be microchipped at the owner's expense before being released back to them. Enforcement will be in the way of civil penalties, criminal penalties, civil injunction in order of abatement. And our recommendations at this time are, one, the opening of the public hearing on the proposed ordinance, and then, two, approval of the ordinance with a January 1st, 2015 effective date.
Thank you, ma'am. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Manager, we've got a list that wants to speak to that.
Yes, sir. I'll call your name if you'll come forward to the podium and give us your name and address.
Wait. Somebody say something? Did you say something, Michelle?
No.
Oh, excuse me. Go ahead.
First person we have is Byron Bateman.
Mr. Chairman, I'll keep your time pursuant to your rules at five minutes maximum per speaker.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Byron Bateman. I'm from Farmville, and I would like to speak to y'all tonight. I am very sympathetic to the plight of animals in general, and I understand the need to improve the services towards our animals. I think the way that animals frequently are treated in this world by a number of people is a sad testament to our priorities. However, I am opposed to this ordinance as it currently stands on a number of points. Firstly, I believe that this is an ordinance that is largely punitive in nature in a way that relies far too heavily on a relatively, unfortunately, a relatively small segment of the population, and that is responsible dog owners. When we go to have our dogs vaccinated, we'll be required to pay the upfront cost of this ordinance, and the responsible dog owners will foot that bill, whereas the people who aren't taking care of their dogs aren't getting their dogs vaccinated. They're not going to be providing you with any upfront revenue streams. Now, perhaps later on down the road, if you catch them in violation, then certainly you have the option. But upfront, this ordinance does seem to rely very heavily on the responsible dog owners to foot the bill, whereas people who are taking care of their animals are actually mitigating the need for such an ordinance as this. Secondly, if this truly is a public safety issue, and I do believe that it is, then we, as citizens, as taxpayers in general, should all be on the hook for it. It shouldn't be something that is solely on the backs of one segment of the populace. I very firmly believe that. And I also believe that if we're going to rely on somewhat one-dimensional documentation on numbers of dog bites, that it would also be very well-serving for us to take a look at the extensive documentation on the needs for secondary treatment of cat scratches and cat bites, as well as the detrimental effects that free-roaming cats can have on native wildlife populations. There is an extensive body of research on both of these topics. And lastly, on a personal note, I will say that I have found myself in needs of the Pitt County Animal Services on a couple of occasions. And as a taxpayer and a citizen, I regret to say that on those occasions, I was generally left to deal with the issue on my own. So now, I'm very hesitant to greet this proposal with enthusiasm when it directs more of my tax dollars towards an agency whose purpose is admittedly very sound, very important, but as it stands, an agency whose actions I find lacking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman. Mr. Manager?
Next, Mary Beth Hobgood.
My name is Mary Beth Hobgood. I'm the Executive Director of Spay Today, Greenville's Low-Cost Spay-Neuter Clinic, a Pitt County taxpayer, and the proud owner of a rescue dog. I'm here this evening representing the members of Spay Today, the Board of Directors, and the supporters of Spay Today. If they would please stand, as we all stand in support of Michelle Whaley and the exceptional service that she and the Pitt County Animal Shelter provide to the citizens of Pitt County. Although Pitt County Animal Shelter is exceptional at what they do, current dollars and manpower make the job extremely difficult. If approved, the canine control ordinance will broaden the scope and increase the responsibilities of the shelter. The ordinance will inevitably result in increased shelter intake. In order to avoid the shelter returning to a holding pen for doomed animals and negating all of the fine work accomplished in recent years, full funding and full staffing, as proposed by Ms. Whaley, is critical. Spay Today, along with our animal advocates and our partners, Humane Society of Eastern Carolina, Pitt Friends, and the members of the Animal Control Advisory Board, will continue to work toward our goal of a loving home for all animals and safety for the citizens of Pitt County. We encourage our commissioners to join us in this mission by adopting the common sense regulations, but most critically, fully funding animal control, allowing them to successfully and compassionately do their jobs. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am.
If I have a show of who's supporting of this for Spay Today? You can stand up. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Corville. My address is on file. And I am glad that we are coming up with an ordinance. However, the way this is drafted and the money that's going into it, I cannot support in good conscience because there is too many human needs that are being set aside because we don't have enough money. I have been reading everything that has been published on this, and here are the questions that I would like somebody to tell me so I can feel better about it. The budget appears to me over the top. When we talk about, in five years, having 1,314 bites, people bite, I want to know what percentage of the residents of the county does this account for? Nobody has talked about that. So, I mean, are people, the same people, being beaten because of circumstances, or is it just a widespread thing? Is it one dog biting multiple times because that dog is being mistreated or taught to bite? There are... I would like more information on that. And then, we go to so many... I mean, that's a lot of people. We're talking about two administrative assistants, three and a half shelter attendants in July, and three additional animal officers in October, and then four more positions next year. This, to me, is over the top. This, you can say, this is the year of the dog in Pitt County. Yeah? Because this is all we've been talking about for months. It's been all over the papers, and I commend you for addressing it because it needs to be addressed. And we need to come with something. But let's not do like Nancy Pelosi. Let's approve it first and find out what's in it later. We'd rather, I'd rather find out, take time and find out all these things, just how many people have been beaten, what are the circumstances? Are they bitten by dogs that are owned by somebody, or are they bitten by dogs that are out there just on their own because somebody just left the county and left them to fend for themselves or whatever? To me, these are legitimate things, and I just think that increasing the budget by $459,000, when you're saying no to social service, to the Health Department, to the sheriff, is over the top at this time. So please consider these things. I really would like to know how many people in Pitt County, individuals, have been beaten by dogs? Are they trainers? Who are these people? I mean, there has to be a record somewhere. So I think Ms. Sanchez did a great job. Certainly appreciate it. Certainly appreciate the people that volunteer at the shelter. But that's another thing. How long is the line to adopt dogs from the shelter? So if we're going to keep these dogs, if we find them rambling around, we're going to bring them in, fix them up, and then what? Because just how big is the demand to adopt these dogs? It's all about money. And we're not out of the woods yet. You have a hard job. I don't envy you, but please, don't adopt this until this... You know about this. Let's just put on brakes a little bit and then move forward because I would like to see an ordinance. It's long overdue, but this is just a little bit over the top, and we just don't have really all the information that we need to have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next?
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. And I wanted to thank the commissioners and the staff, and Michelle and her staff, for all the hard work you've done on this. I think it's an amazing amount of effort that you've put in to get the facts and to try to come to a reasonable conclusion. I also think it's very expensive, but it's probably worth it for the community and the future of Pitt County to have appropriate ordinances and staffing to enforce it. I think it'll make it better for all the animals, and it'll make it better for the citizens. It'll probably make it a safer county. And I know there are many different priorities and many hands that are out, but I think this is an important topic, and I wanted to thank you for all the hard work that you've done. My one comment in specifics is that for the animals that are roaming and overpopulating and costing the taxpayers money, I don't think you should give them a discount for a three-year license. I think you should try to encourage people to have their animals spayed and neutered. That way, it'll cost the county less in the long run. But I thank you again for your time and effort on this. I think it's a job that you've done well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next. Try again.
They don't want to speak.
Thank you.
Okay. Last one we have is Dale Jennings.
Hi, I'm Dale Jennings. I thought I was signing the other one, but I do want to talk on this one because I do have two dogs that are safe on the shelter. One of them does have a broken leg, and she hobbles around, but she runs free in my area because I don't want to tie her up. I've got one that I've got on a leash of a cable 40-foot long with a 40-foot extension. And my dog stays around my area and might go a little bit out of the area. But anybody comes in my yard and wants to take my dog, I will offend her. It's just like stealing my dog. It's not right. And I think this is just for money, and I don't think that's right at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Having had the opportunity to sign up to speak on this occasion for this matter, I now open it for anyone that did not sign and wants to speak. And if there are or is one or more, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm John Cole. Ever since I've been of age, I've been a property owner and a taxpayer in Pitt County. You know, always residing in Pitt County and owning property in it. I've always had hunting dogs for most of those years for only hunting purposes. I feel like the ordinance has been drafted, and I have a copy of it right in front of my eyes. I think it's mostly for money. A lot of it is going to be wasted, millions of money, probably for new animal control facility and storage or to house them until they adopt it. And most all counties are getting, doing away with their euthanasia processes and facilities. Like I say, I don't know what the county thinks they're going to do with so many animals. And unless they hire, and that's going to cost millions of dollars, too, to hire a bunch of animal control officers to patrol the county and collect these dogs, and I can't understand why only dogs. It applies to debt. The county has always supported the animal shelter for something other than dogs, for other animals, as well as cats mainly. And I'd like to ask this, if I may. How many of you commissioners, as I always have, reside in unincorporated areas of Pitt I think I see four hands. Like I say, I've always been an unincorporated resident taxpayer in Pitt County. I have taken care of my animals, had them vaccinated all the years for rabies, as required by law, and I still feel like it's a waste of millions of dollars of money for this county that we all reside in, I hope. It would be best, in my opinion, for the county's commissioners, being the Pitt County Sheriff's Department, and at this point, the animal control stuff of the county, facilities and the personnel cannot do and will not offer to do anything about instances of dog owners within the county letting their dogs roam the neighborhoods, and it will destroy other people's hunting dogs and personal property, mostly other animals and wild game the year round. And like I say, the Sheriff's Department won't, has never has in my lifetime, done anything about any instances that was reported to, as well as animal control people in Pitt County, personnel. I think they should consider implementing some county ordinance and not just in rural areas, unincorporated areas, the whole county. That an animal owner, if it can be determined for surely, as it has many times in the past in not so many of the later years, that that person's dog destroys other people's dogs, hunting dogs especially, because that's why the destroyed dog gets wound up in that neighborhood at that time. That makes the animal that does the damage and the destroying responsible and liable in some means for the actions of their animals, mainly dogs, nearly ugly, family dogs. Like I say, that it let roam their property as well as the whole neighborhoods at free wheel, 365 days a year, year out of year. I have something here that I would like to present, Mr. Coulson, because he has already been approached by an individual, and he found out this afternoon, when I called him and asked him, did he know about this hearing tonight? And he came to my house immediately and asked me to present this to Tom Coulson because he has already addressed Tom Coulson and Vice Sheriffman Webb, I think. That's the only Webb I see. Anyway, could I present this to you, Mr. Coulson?
Sure.
And I thank y'all for your attention and your time and your effort.
Johnny Bederid, I remember talking with him.
He said he was supposed to get back with you and did not at the time, but he asked me when he found out I was coming to this hearing to present it to you if you were in touch.
Thank you, Sheriff. Having said what I did previously regarding the opportunity to speak, do we have anyone now that desires to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cindy Wooton. I'm a Pitt County resident for some 30 years now, also a taxpayer. This is impromptu, so I apologize if it's not terribly organized or... As I was listening to the comments, particularly about this all comes down to money, I couldn't help but think of the famous quote, and I apologize, I'm not going to be able to tell you who said it, but the idea is that you can basically evaluate a society on how they treat the least amongst that society. And if anyone knows, please tell me. It's a misquote, but the idea being the creatures, humans and others, that don't have a voice. And I would just like to suggest that I'm huge into many human organizations to support education, to support social services. I would just like to submit that as numbers go, there seems to be fewer dedicated towards those that have no voice, animals surely being one of those. And I would just like to follow the comment about it all comes down to money with the thought that this could be money exceedingly well-spent, not only on behalf of the animals, but on behalf of those individuals who work so hard to make all these agencies work together. And let's not discount, really, the relationships that animals bring to their owners who find them, to senior citizens, to people who come and adopt, who change lives. I don't think you can necessarily underestimate the price tag on that. Yes, we're in tough economic times. This seems to me a progressive step in the right direction, a win-win, addressing concerns but also addressing compassion in those who don't have a voice. So I would just like to submit that thought. When you think of money, I certainly don't think it's money poorly spent. And on another note, educating our children, bringing our children up, how nice to be proud of a facility that compassionately deals with the issue, that addresses the issue, gives it attention, instead of just swiping it aside and maybe, you know... I just think it's money well-spent, and I think it's worth thinking about those with no voice and the compassionate side of this. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Finally, last call. Anyone that has not had an opportunity to desire to speak on this issue? If not, then I declare the public hearing closed as pertaining to this ordinance. What's the pleasure, the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the animal control ordinance as written and the implemented per the schedule that we had previously discussed.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded and discussed. Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I still have concerns about the enforceability of it. If people aren't paying the $10 fee, how are we going to enforce it? Are the vets collecting the fee, Michelle?
What about the dogs that are, like, made in Ryland County, their county clinics held in all other counties, and their facilities located either Pitt County but very close by where different people live? And what about all the dog owners that do not abide and never have or never will fight rabies?
Well, that's just my concern, is the enforceability of it, the feasibility. If people just don't pay the fee, how are we going to end up funding it? And then, you know, where it does... And then, you know, where it does hold the hunters, um, out, you know, exempts them from the rules, but does not exempt them from the fee. So if they have ten or fifteen hunting dogs, it's gonna be a hundred and fifty dollars a year. And, and as, as I mentioned before, government programs never get cheaper. In the, in the future, it could be twenty, thirty, forty dollars a dog, um, as the boards go on and as times change, and we'll be here or we won't, but, but the issue will be here. And so that, that's my concern with that. I don't feel like it's in, in, enforceable. I think that, um, it's been pushed through. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
In Pitt County, you know, who is gonna enforce all of that rabies, rabies, rabies of Pitt County? They'll be a...
Any further discussion from the commissioners? If not, are you ready to vote? All right, let's vote. Thank you, uh, Mr. Manager. We, we might have a issue about the time, just talking to everybody about the board. We indicated that the, uh, overview would be at eight fifteen for the budget. We're being a little presumptive, I think, but going forward to it. And if people had said on that, what's the feeling of the board?
You wanna take a short break? You maybe let the people who are here for the first ordinance or issue, give them a chance to...
That's one alternative, but I, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Yeah.
I think we need to have a recess, a short recess and give them an opportunity...
Mr. Chairman, I think we did advertise it at approximately eight fifteen. Was it eight fifteen?
Seven, seven.
Seven fifteen.
But public hearings were advertised at seven fifteen.
Okay.
Both public hearings?
I think the paper had mentioned it was scheduled to be heard approximately eight fifteen.
Course your agenda doesn't show that. I might be misreading the agenda.
No, you're reading the, the agenda correct. I think the, the public advertisement was, was seven o'clock for both hearings.
All right, we'll have a fifteen minute recess then. We're now back in, um, session. Mr. Elliott, show your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first want to ask for the board, you have three documents in front of you. You have a copy of the PowerPoint that will be displayed on the screens and on the television audience. You also have a copy of the formal manager's budget message for, obviously for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. It goes in, it's kind of a synopsis, but it goes into more detail than what I will expound upon tonight in the PowerPoint presentation. The third document you have in front of you is the actual proposed budget ordinance for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen that, um, specifies by area how much money, money is being, um, proposed to be appropriated in terms of all expenditures and then all, all revenues. In terms of the, the budget as proposed for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, this has been a, a process, probably a good six, seven month process, internal to the organization and in some respects external with those agencies that submit funding requests as well. The department heads have been active with myself and the finance department, our finance director, Dwayne Holder, in compiling their budgets, uh, meeting with Mr. Holder and myself in budget conferences once, if not two or three times over, depending upon what their, their budget called for. The budget, in terms of the funding priorities, we make a goal and aim to base these upon your adopted priorities. And these are listed, I'm not gonna read them out, uh, word for word, but basically you see the underlying captions, um, education being one of the county's top priorities, then public safety, community safety, economic development, health and welfare, facility and space needs, infrastructure improvements, and then the, the bottom priority being, or not last, but the last one listed, recreational activities for the, the citizens of Pitt County. In terms of the, um, the budget development, the following factors were considered in terms of, um, creating a proposed budget for your consideration and for the budget workshops that were held. This budget continues the concept of base budgeting that we've been utilizing for the last couple of years. It builds upon what we consider structural balance. In terms of base budgeting, structural balance, we're making sure that our available revenues incoming exceed our expenditures on our outflow, so that we are not dipping into our reserves or our fund balance and spending in, in the negative. Again, it addresses your stated priorities that you have adopted that I just, um, um, read, you know, specifically in the areas of education, public safety, health and welfare, in terms of by adding positions and adding additional funding. It responds to concerns that are related to animal control in the unincorporated areas of, of the county. It addresses and considers the input received from you as the, the board during the May two thousand fourteen budget workshops. It addresses critical staffing needs in the sheriff's office, social services and nine-one-one communications. And then the last point being that it does continue to maintain existing service levels throughout the various departments and agencies of the county. In terms of budget overview, the, this budget maintains a, an ad valorem tax rate of sixty-eight cents per one hundred dollars of assessed, um, evaluation on property. If a hundred thousand dollar house or property, divide that by a hundred, times it by point six eight, you have a six hundred and eighty dollar tax bill for that associated property, um, for the tax bill. There are other, um, associated taxes that would be, if you're out in the county, you're gonna have EMS tax, you're gonna have the fire district tax, um, are two examples that would be on top of that. But the base ad valorem tax at sixty-eight cents, again, would be six hundred and eighty dollars on a hundred thousand dollar property. The budget continues, um, a limited fund balance appropriation. Again, building upon that, that base budgeting, structural, structural balanced budgeting, we are only appropriating that amount of fund balance that is needed to balance the budget, um, approximately, um, two, two million, four hundred thousand dollars. Um, the, the one exception is the year one funding for animal control, the four hundred thousand dollar amount that we are acknowledging that, that first year there is some fund balance that is spent. But otherwise, we expect the full two million dollars to fall back and no fund balance be, beyond that would be, um, would be spent. It increases, um, appropriations to Pitt County schools, Pitt Community College in terms of their current expense funding, provides the animal control expansion that was just, um, presented and voted on by you as a board. Provides a one and a half percent market adjustment, or what we used to call a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, to the workforce of Pitt County. This would begin six months into the year, in the, in January of two thousand fifteen, which in effect annualizes to point seven five percent. Um, but come July one the next year, then the whole one point five percent would be, um, in the employee's base pay. This budget delays the opening of E-Block at the detention center, um, for one more year for consideration possibly in two thousand fourteen, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. In terms of all of the, the operating funds of the county, we are, currently have a two hundred and eleven million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and nine, nine dollars total budget. Proposed for next year, beginning July one, be a budget of two hundred and fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars. This represents a one point nine one percent change year over year. On the next slide, we are showing, within that overall two hundred and fifteen million dollar budget, there is a general fund portion of that that is the, the main driver of the ad valorem tax rate. It is, um, the way it's broken out, there was a hundred and sixty million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars in total requests that came before me and the finance director to consider for inclusion in the overall budget. Before moving on, just want to remind the board, we had about one point one million dollars in, in growth in terms of additional revenues to appropriate out, um, in, in this budget. Because of that, I had eight million, eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars in cuts for expansion, um, that were not able to be accommodated due to the, the non-growth in the tax base. So my preliminary budget with, of, of the general fund, which is part of the overall total funding of, of the county's budget ordinance, is a hundred and fifty-two million, seven hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. Again, two million dollars of fund balance is part of that revenue that we expect to fall back by June thirtieth of two thousand fifteen. Four hundred and fifteen thousand for the appropriation for year one of animal control, and it holds the rate constant. Um, it's, the sixty-eight cent rate is broken in between what we, um, appropriate to the industrial development commission and then to the general fund, point six, six, seven, three, zero, um, of the sixty-eight cent rate. So for, um, for fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, that we currently stand in, we have a budget of, that has adopted of a hundred and forty-nine million, seven hundred and eighty-one, one hundred and twenty-two dollars. Represents a one point nine, nine-five percent change year over year. Within the general fund, looking at, um, major functional areas, general government comes in at a hundred and ten million, seven hundred and twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two. Public health, nine million, five sixty-one, four forty. Social services, thirty-one million, five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, zero ninety-three. Court facilities, two hundred and eighty thousand, and then mental health at five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred. Back to the total, um, pro, proposed appropriation within that general fund of one fifty-two, seven oh eight, six sixty-five. Uh, moving on quickly to review the proposed fee changes that are, um, planned for July one in the New Year's budget. In the table in front of you, within the first category, list the department being animal control. We do have the, um, owner requested euthanasia, um, currently fifteen dollars, proposing to move that to twenty. Microchipping is something that we did not bring out in the budget or, in the budget workshops, but it has been part of the, the budget discussions, that the, um, proposed fee for microchipping would be ten dollars. In terms of the, the license fee for the dog license, a one-year license, obviously currently there's, there's no fee for that, 'cause it doesn't exist. But we are looking at, um, for an altered animal, ten dollars, unaltered, twenty for one year. If they choose to go for a three-year dog license, it would be twenty-five dollars for altered and fifty dollars for unaltered. In terms of the specialty dog licenses, these are what we were considering for the, um, the hunting dogs as such. Five to ten dogs would be forty-five dollars, eleven to twenty dogs would be seventy dollars, twenty-one dog, dogs and over would be a flat fee of a hundred dollars. Within the environmental health department or division of the health department, a couple of changes here. Restaurant plan review, twenty seats or more, currently two hundred, moving to two hundred, but you'll see that there's a, um, footnote there saying that the proposed fee of two hundred dollars is for all restaurant reviews. This now includes food stands, mobile restaurants, plus your traditional restaurants. So it's, it's a, it doesn't look like it's a change, but we're actually, the, the state statute now adds in food stands and mobile units under the flat fee of two hundred dollars. For restaurant plan review, less than twenty seats, um, that is going from a hundred dollars to two hundred dollars. Again, my understanding that is driven by, by statute. For, um, restaurant plan review for food stands, currently seventy-five dollars. Again, that one's going to two hundred dollars to be consistent with the others. Within the next division of the, um, uh, proposed fee increases within environmental health, in terms of authorizations to construct, um, for permits for, um, septic tank systems, the, the fees are being, um, changed to, um, basically eliminated, um, in terms of the old type of systems that were permitted prior to July one, two thousand and one. The fee we used to charge depending upon the type of system as listed, one through six, fifty, a hundred, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars. All those are being now eliminated and combined with, um, the current fee structure for septic tanks. And the last area listed on this, this slide is environmental health again. A swimming pool plan review for, um, they're adding in the additional wedding pools and spas at the initial application, um, actually, the, the current fee is a hundred dollars, and actually that, that's going away. Moving on to the revenue review and highlights. Trying to move on quickly, um, for fiscal year, again, coming up July one, estimated revenues for all funds as broken out in the pie chart in the table here, two hundred and fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand, three forty-three. Obviously, the largest majority of all these revenues come from ad valorem property taxes, a little less than fifty percent as, um, illustrated on the, the pie chart. And you see, can see the balance as illustrated otherwise. Ad valorem tax rate, again, proposed to remain at sixty-eight cents with no in, increase. The proposed distribution within that sixty-eight cents, point six, seven, three to the general fund, point zero, zero, seven to economic development for industrial development fund. The, um, value of our tax base did increase by a hundred and fourteen million, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, zero ninety-seven, which was a point nine nine percent, little less than one percent increase in the base. We are grateful for, um, for growth, we are grateful for the increase. We wish it was much more so we could, um, address more of the needs of the eight million dollars of, of, um, requests that were, were asked for that could not be accommodated due to not enough, fast enough growth. But I would rather have, um, slow, constant and steady growth than fast growth that then plunges through a, reflects, the effects of a recession four years down the, the line. I'd rather have something that is constant and steady, we can depend upon, than, than something that's artificial and then boomerangs on us in a period of time in the future. In terms of expenditure reviews and highlights, again, this budget expands animal control services that addresses one of your stated, um, priorities of public safety. Increases Pitt County schools' current expense, that addresses your priority of education. Increases the county appropriation to DSS, that addresses health and welfare. Increases the Pitt Community College current expense, again, addressing education. Increases staffing to the sheriff's department, addressing public safety. Increases county appropriation to the public health department, addressing health and welfare. Increases staffing to the, um, county's, uh, main PSAP or public safety answering point, being our nine-one-one center, and that addresses public safety. Uh, it also, again, plans for an appropriation of a, a COLA beginning in January twenty fifteen as previously presented. And it does continue the vehicle replacement plan as we've had in years past. In terms of the, um, again, another pie chart correspondant like we had on the, the revenues, expenditures, um, again, the two hundred and fifteen million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand overall operating budget, your greatest expenditure category here, um, we're happy to say is education at twenty-five, a little over twenty-five percent. And public safety, human services, general government are almost evenly divided thereafter. Wanted to just fly through animal control again real quick. Um, there's really no need for this, you've already adopted the ordinance. But again, adds three animal control officers in advance for, of the ordinance for enforcement. Adds three and a half shelter staff to meet statutory requirements and accommodate more dog intakes. Adds two office staff for telephone office coverage and dog licensing activities. Projects dog licensing revenue in unincorporated Pitt County. Assumes utilization of existing facility and anticipates expansion of actual shelter space. And I guess just to address an earlier question or inquiry, all, a, a good portion of the dogs coming into the shelter will not just be brought in to be groomed for adoption. Obviously, we would like that and have that be our goal, but the, um, the, the situation will be, our, our euthanasia rate will, will have to go up to accommodate the enforcement of this ordinance. Unless there's a ground swell of support of citizens from Pitt County or other areas who come in to adopt these animals, um, some may be unadoptable, would have to be put down to, due to public safety concerns, if they're wild, wild dogs per se. But we would, we'd make it our goal to adopt them out, but the hard cold truth is that probably will not be the, the, the majority of the cases. In terms of, um, expansion overview, otherwise, we have, again, the proposed one-time utilization of four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of the fund balance, just for this one year, beginning in fiscal year sixteen. Hopefully, a, a commitment, a commitment by the board for the reduction of the ad valorem, um, tax discount rate to fund the reoccurring expenditures, taking that down from a two percent as it stands today, down to a half a percent. And we'll bring this back to the board in terms of resolution, um, at your next meeting, meeting on June the sixteenth, so we can get that on, on record with the Department of Revenue in Raleigh and have that planned for and ready for implementation. Once that's put into place, that then fills the gap of not having to appropriate fund balance in the following fiscal year at the tune of the four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Again, following up on the, all this is dealing with animal control. Staff will begin discussion with the ten different municipalities in Pitt County for the countywide dog licensing. Hopefully, we'll get their buy-in to allow this within their municipalities so that we'll have that additional revenue in the following fiscal year. If not, as we've stated in the past, we may look, have to look at charging them a higher rate for the utilization of the county's, um, shelter to bring in dogs that are captured by their staff within the municipalities. And then the last point to be, uh, to begin planning for the facility expansion and construction that's associated with the, um, this overall program. With that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, and I turn it back over to you.
Having received that presentation by the county manager, I now declare the public hearing open. Uh, Mr. Manager, have you got a list?
Yes, sir. Um, again, as in the last public hearing, if you'll come forward, give us your name and address. First person we have is Dr. Lionel Cato.
Good evening, county commissioners. I'm very pleased to be here tonight. I'm Lionel Cato, I'm a principal here in Pitt County, and I'm the president of the Pitt County Principals and Assistant Principals Association. Every member, every administrator in our county is a member and every school is a site member. And I wanted to express some concerns that we have with the budget that is proposed in the context of what we're facing from the state in this upcoming budget year. We've all seen the media news and it's not looking very good for public schools. And in the context of that, you know, our county is here to support schools, and we're very appreciative of the support that we've had over the past couple of years, and we appreciate the increase in appropriations for this coming year. However, there is still a shortfall of what has been requested. And I want to share some information with you. You know, Pitt County is the hub of eastern North Carolina, and we lead in medicine, we lead in agriculture, higher learning, and economically. And Pitt County Schools is the largest school system in the eastern part of the state. We need the continued support of the county commissioners in order to lead in K-12 education. Our children deserve the very best education that we can give them. Our teachers deserve the very best work environment that we can give them. Our parents and community deserve the very best levels of service that we can provide. Our students deserve the same opportunities that students in Chapel Hill and Raleigh and Charlotte and larger areas in our state have access to. I sincerely request that our county commissioners continue to provide the strong support that we've had in the past to assist our schools in making up for these shortfalls that are likely to come forward from the state government. We are reaching a critical mass in public schools, coming down from the state level. When is enough enough, is the question. Our teachers and students are dynamic enough, and they have risen to every occasion whenever there's been cuts. But at some point, you're going to trim so much fat that you start to hit bone and there's going to be bleeding that you can't stop. And there's going to be long-term benefits to the economic health of our county and our future. We've had great, strong leadership in Pitt County Schools from Michael Cowan, our finance associate superintendent, and we've managed to not have the bloodletting that some of the other counties have had with all the cuts that were coming from the state over the past couple of years. But demands are increasing on our teachers and our students every year as programs continue to be cut. From an administrative standpoint, recruitment and retention issues are very real. Attracting the best and brightest to work with our students in the Pitt County Schools is also becoming very difficult, as it is across the state. Supplements and those types of perks are not the whole answer, but they are part of the equation. This is the first year as a principal that I've gone without having a hundred percent staff-faculty. Several of my colleagues are dealing with the same issue in very hard-to-feel positions. I've even had difficulty retaining classified people, custodians and otherwise, you know, for various reasons. Teachers are moving out of teaching in Pitt County to move furniture, to work at bars because they make more money doing those things than they do actually teaching in Pitt County Schools. Private tutoring. I've had teachers have to stop teaching because they've had a child and it's cheaper for them to stay at home and raise their own child than it is for them to actually work and have benefits. They can't afford the childcare and all that goes along with having a child. And of course, there's teachers who leave to go to other counties, some smaller than ours, that are providing more for their employees. Pitt County Schools was ranked twenty-five in per pupil expenditure in two thousand and four. We are now forty-fifth. With the current budget picture, we're probably going to slip out of the top fifty. Is that something that we want to say for Pitt County Schools, the leader of the eastern part of our state, that we are not progressing, rather, we're regressing? As a community, we owe it to our children to give them the best chance at success in life. Teachers and classified employees are part of that success. We didn't get into this business to become rich, but we do have bills to pay, and we have families to raise and provide for. Our local economy will suffer, I'm almost finished. If so many have to be laid off from the public schools, which is what we will be facing, the future economic prosperity of our county is going to be threatened if we don't take another look at the budget picture. Please help us continue to move forward in Pitt County Schools and not move backward.
Next, we have Carla Hart.
I'm Carla Hart. I'm a private citizen of Pitt County and proud to be one, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As you deliberate your budget, I'd like to speak to you in support of the sheriff's request for an increase in salary, but more widely, I'd like to speak to you about the employees of the county who have been underpaid but over-serve you in many ways. And I want to start by saying I am not a county employee, I'm a retired citizen, and I like being retired. I think that when you look at salaries, you need to look at responsibilities and what comes with a job. And I'm not sure that everyone here has had an opportunity to do that, so I would like to outline for you some of the responsibilities within the sheriff's office so that you're able to make a comparison between the salary of that position, not the individual, but the position, and salaries of other positions within the county. The sheriff's office has, under its responsibility, the detention center, which has almost half the number of people of Viden Memorial Hospital. Half the people that are housed in the hospital are housed in our detention center. That's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, between four hundred and five hundred inmates that are in that facility. And the sheriff's office is responsible for their safety, their well-being, and the public safety. In addition, the sheriff is responsible for the safety enforcement of the courthouse and the courtrooms, and the transfer of inmates safely from one facility to another, and ensures that the public who are in those courtrooms are safe while there. The narcotics division, something all of us, I think, are concerned about, is responsible for halting the illegal use of both prescription medications and drugs like heroin. I don't know if you know, but Pitt County has become a very popular site for heroin dealers, and the sheriff's office is doing everything that it can to attack that problem because we don't want our children to have the opportunity to purchase cocaine or heroin. We don't want meth labs in our county, and it is up to the sheriff's office to help enforce our laws against drugs and to make sure that our communities are safe. In addition, the sheriff's office has the area of investigations. These are the people who are called out night and day to respond when there's something that happens in our community. I want to call to mind, or I want you to call to mind, the incident in Farmville where three individuals walked into the mini-mart and systematically murdered other individuals. In that case, the sheriff's office were the first responders, and they were the people who solved that crime, and those people are now in a federal penitentiary because within forty-eight hours, the sheriff had done the investigations and their office had solved and arrested individuals in relationship to that. The civil division is the division that serves papers, warrants, eviction notices, notifies people when they're delinquent on taxes. And I think it's important to note that it's only the sheriff's office that legally has the ability to serve those papers. It isn't Greenville Police, it isn't any other agency but the sheriff's office. It also covers, the civil division also covers, child support enforcement and child abuse and neglect. The forensics and the crime lab are the areas where we are one of the only counties that has a PhD in chemistry employed in our crime lab. That helps us to expedite drug charges and allows us to be able to get the prosecutor's office information more quickly to try and prosecute drug dealers. The patrol division, we've all seen, but they're the people in the county who respond. If your neighbor has some kind of suspicious activity going on, or you notice that it is your neighbor who might have people coming and going all hours of the day, or causes you to be concerned about what's going on, it's the patrol division that will be the first responders. And I want to say, because of the communications division, the average time of response now is under ten minutes. At the same time, let's just imagine, I'm also almost finished, if you'll allow me to go on.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I also want to say, none of us want to think that the issue of domestic violence is in our backyard, but in those cases where that might be suspected, again, if we live in the county, it is the sheriff's office that will be the people who respond. Last but not least, it's the community impact division. I want to stress that none of these are inclusive. I'm not meaning to give you a full description of the job, but some highlights of those areas that the sheriff is responsible for. Probably most notable in community impact is the school resource officers. None of us want to ever see anything happen in our county similar to what happened in Newtown, Connecticut. But because we have school resource officers in our school, we have a chance of preventing any kind of tragedy because those individuals are in daily contact with students, they know what's going on, they gain the trust and respect of the students in the schools, and in the event that there is any kind of violence, we have individuals in our schools to protect our children. The communications people I referenced also work twenty-seven, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. In closing, I'd like to say that the sheriff's office is the highest-ranking law enforcement official in the county. The highest-ranking law enforcement official in the county. In times of emergency, it's the sheriff that takes charge of Greenville Police and the Highway Patrol and will direct our citizens in a safe manner. In fact, this very meeting is protected by members of the sheriff's office. As you enter this budget process, you have a difficult decision to make. There will never be enough money. There is never enough money. I'd like to point out that you just accepted an ordinance that commits you to close to half a million dollars, four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's almost half a million dollars. And yet, you have employees in this county who are underpaid. You have an opportunity to begin to write that, not only now, but in the future. Again, I'm not talking people, I'm talking positions. What we'd all like to see is that in four years, the salary of the sheriff's office is competitive so that we have the best and the brightest and the most qualified individuals seeking the office because it is compensated at a level that attracts the best. We have been very fortunate in this county to have an individual who has put aside money. It is unfair to continue for us to think that that will always be the case. I would like to point out, and then I will stop, that the budget of the county manager is almost twice the amount of money being paid to our sheriff. And the county assistant, or the county deputy, county manager, the deputy county manager's salary is more than sixty-two thousand dollars more than our sheriff. You have an opportunity to change that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, Kathy Herring.
My name is Kathy Herring, and I am president of Parents for Public Schools of Pitt County. Our mission is to strengthen Pitt County public schools by engaging, educating, and mobilizing our community. We believe that true education reform, excellent schools, and successful students are most possible when parents are effective and engaged advocates for public education. Our members support public schools in Pitt County because they offer children at all levels of need the best opportunity to reach their full potential. Our membership is made up of Pitt County area parents, grandparents, and community members who share the belief that public schools are stronger when community members are actively involved. Members of our Board of Directors represent schools and civic organizations across our county. Many of them are here tonight, and I'd like to ask them to stand. Those present are Caroline Doertie and Carolyn Reed from JH Rose, Kathy March with CM Epps and JH Rose, Melissa Adamson and Maureen Brazel from Farmville Middle School and Farmville High School, Clarissa Lee, Pactolus and Aiden Area Schools, Jim Seesler with United Way of Pitt County, and Robin Daly with Student Success Academy. We also have board members representing EB Acock, Hope Middle School, DH Conley, and the Greenville Pitt County Chamber of Commerce. Thank you. After discussions with school officials on the local budget, as well as various versions of the state budget being debated in Raleigh, we are very concerned about the impact of budget cuts on our local school system. Pitt County Schools' projections of their fixed cost increases, meaning mandated salary and benefit increases, mandated employer-paid retirement and health insurance, and increases in the cost of utilities and liability insurances, results in a requested increase of one point oh nine million just to maintain existing levels of service. The current recommendation of only a two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollar increase therefore creates a budget shortfall for the schools of almost eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. As an organization, Parents for Public Schools is concerned that if our county cannot find the funding to maintain our public school services, we are setting a very dangerous precedent. On behalf of the parents of Pitt County, we strongly urge you to reconsider the requested increase this year. As a community, we need to make education a top-budget priority today and in the future so that we may not only maintain our schools, but offer new and visionary programs as well. In our rapidly changing world, excellent public schools are a critical part of the economic engine that will determine whether Pitt County leads eastern North Carolina or whether we fall behind. We owe our children, our area employers, and our community adequately funded schools. Thank you so much.
Next, we have Carolyn Reed.
I'm Carolyn Reed. I'm from Academic Boosters at JH Rose High School. Academic Boosters is sort of Rose's version of the PTA. We fundraise, we volunteer our time and talents, we scrape up other volunteers and bring them into school, and we support the faculty and staff in any way that we can. We are over two hundred families strong now in the Rose District. I have been a parent at JH Rose for nine years. My third child will graduate this year, and I've been on the Academic Booster Board for four years. I have some good news for you, something happy to tell you. This year, the senior class at JH Rose, three hundred-odd kids, have amassed a record-breaking seven million dollars in college scholarships. Other high schools in the county have also amassed large amounts of college scholarships. So how do they do this? Well, I can tell you, they don't do it by themselves. And their success didn't start in high school. It started in the elementary schools and in the middle schools in Pitt County. Their success can be directly attributed to the dedication and support of Pitt County Schools. And I mean from the top to the bottom. The central office who finds and fights for funding for programs that keep our students on the edge, the competitive edge, from the administrators, the principals, the guidance counselors who stay late keeping the schools open so our kids can participate in extracurriculars, that they need to be competitive for college and for careers. And for the teachers. And for the teachers, many of whom work a full day, then they coach a team, then they supervise mock trial, science olympiad, robotics, music activities, drama activities. These people put in the longest days you can imagine, and they don't do it for the pay. They do it because they care about public education, and they care about our students and our children. In short, public schools work hard to help our students achieve success, but they are stretched to the very limit. We fundraise all that we can. Trust me when I say, we leave no rock unturned. We squeeze everyone for every penny that we can get for the public schools. We do a pretty good job, but there is a limit, and I think we're reaching it. We have rounded up all the volunteers we can round up to fill the gaps for our faculty and staff. We have students manning the phones during the summer in our reception area. We have patched up and made do all we can with our resources. Trust me when I say, these people know how to squeeze a dollar. But I don't think we can take one more budgetary hit without serious consequences to the quality of public education in Pitt County. I don't want to see the trickle of great teachers that I see leaving now to turn into a flood. I don't want to look back and say, "Those were JH Rose's best years," or "Those were the best years for public school in Pitt County." I want Rose's best years to be in the future. I want the best years of all the schools in Pitt County to be in the future. We have worked very, very hard to keep our public schools and public school students succeeding even during tough economic times. Tonight, I am here to ask you to work just as hard to find the funding to support our public schools. We appreciate everything you've done, but we feel like you owe it to all of us, parents, teachers, administrators, and the Pitt County community, to work very, very hard to prioritize and reprioritize to do whatever it takes to adequately fund our public schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Emily Kleindst.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Emily Kleindst. Not only am I a 15-year exceptional children's teacher with Pitt County, but I'm also the president of Pitt County Association of Educators, and I'm speaking about the county budget that provides Pitt County schools with $900,000 less than what's needed to just maintain our operations. In addition, the proposed county budget does not include the requested additional funding to increase the local teacher supplement 1%. The local teacher supplement has not increased since 2003 and does not even begin to compete with our surrounding counties. Last year, a Pitt County school saw the teacher turnover rate increase from 11% to 18%. Lack of additional funding to just maintain our current level of local operations will only serve to create further cuts to the classroom and thereby further disturbance. Disturbance not for us, the employees, but for the 24,000 reasons that we get up and do what we do every day, and that's for our students. We spend $300 less per student than the state average and $600 less than the top 50 counties. 10 years ago, Pitt County was ranked 25th out of North Carolina's 100 counties in our expense appropriations per student, and we are now 45th. This should not be acceptable. We should be standing before you now, asking you to go above and beyond the basics, to really step in the ring and get competitive with the counties that are ahead of us. Instead, we're standing here begging you for the basics to just maintain. Are our children not worth the minimum that it will take to get us by? We are already outraged by the number of great teachers leaving Pitt County, and I ask myself, what percentage of parents are leaving? Who will leave when they find out that this county is not providing for their children, not even keeping up with the rest of the state? We all know that great school systems impact businesses, community growth, real estate. Maybe more people will feel outraged when a business decides to relocate or look elsewhere to open because their employees will demand better for their children. The family who just increased in size and is looking for a bigger home will no longer just look across the street to a bigger neighborhood, they will go to a different county. On behalf of Pitt County Association of Educators, I ask that you provide the additional funding to Pitt County schools to fund the increased cost of operations projected for next year, which will prevent cuts to our operations and our classrooms. Education is the future of Pitt County. Please show your support for the future of our students and this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Brenda Harris.
I'm Brenda Harris, and my address is on file. What I would like to address tonight is some data that we have available. About several weeks ago, you voted for the top staff, which would be the executive branch. Some of us call it the hide-the-ball branch, but being kind, it's our county manager and our county attorney, it's our financial director, and it's our information director. But let's look at the salary basis, and let's talk about our sheriff's department. Mike Taylor began in 1996 with $67,441. Now he makes $147,712, and you were willing to give him a 4% increase. You all voted for it. Scott Elliott began in 2002, $107,000, and today he makes $165,905, and he has perks of cars and so forth that would increase that salary lot. Then we have Janice Galler that began as an assistant in 2005, and it's $76,227. Today, as a county attorney lead, she makes $131,319. Then we have Duane Holder, new with us, the assistant county manager. He started with $111,851. Today, he makes $114,88, and that increased within a year. Each one of you voted, and you said they saved Pitt County money because they kept the secrets. The real issue, guys, is that Mike Taylor makes somewhat $63,000 more than our sheriff, the position. Mr. Elliott makes $81,000 more than our sheriff, the position. Ms. Gallagher makes $47,000 more than our sheriff, the position. Mr. Holder makes $30,000 more than the position. What I'm saying to you is, our sheriff is on a call 24/7. Law enforcement is directly linked to compliance agreements on the Civil Rights Act of 1964. It's in direct compliance with the Disabilities Act of Section 504 and 508, the Americans with Disabilities Act, and every minority in Civil Rights Act that exists under the federal government, which the state of North Carolina said I will agree with when they accepted over millions upon billions, and I believe that this budget is over $100 million or close to it from federal funds that come to the state of North Carolina and then come to Pitt County. What I'm saying to you is, it's an insult for us to pay him $84,000 a year. It's an insult for you to table something when you directly and vigorously support it. You know, I'm glad that our four leadership executive positions were wise enough to say, "We won't take the, we won't take this." But what I'm saying is, is to table an increase for our sheriff, and he did not ask me to stand, because sometimes you folks don't listen. But what I've learned in the last four years is that when I tell you on public address and documented video, then I have you hooked, hook, line, and sinker, because I can guarantee you that you know. What I'm saying to you is that the state of North Carolina is in non-compliance under the LEPs, which is limited English speaking. I can tell you that they're in non-compliance with the women LEPs to get Medicaid and Medicare. And when I look at you and you look all around the room, and I know you're not paying attention, I look and I think, "Why?" Because when it's on video that you know, I would be listening intently, because each one of the times that I've stood before you, the message has been for a reason. The message is to listen, folks. We can't exist without federal funds, but if we violate what the federal government says that we have, you know, our teachers, I just love hearing them, but they didn't tell you of a boy at North Pitt High School that hung himself this year, in the last three or four months, because of bullying. They don't need their salaries cut, guys. We need to support education because that's how we change the future. We need to support education because that's how we change gang activity and drug activity, which is directly linked to our sheriff. You know, none of us are perfect. We're not going to be. But when we look at the differences of what we say and who says it, and we don't understand that it is required that every single person has the same right of liberty and justice for all, I thank you. Make a good decision when you look at the budget and when you look at the sheriff's salary position. Then I suggest that you bring it up to about $110,000, because surely he's worth as much as Mr. Holder is at his startup.
Next, we have Stanley Nichols.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Stanley Nichols, and I reside in Pitt County, North Carolina. And I had a few things I wanted to say, but I've listened to the teachers speak, I've listened to people speak about the sheriff, and it seems to me that the problem is with y'all. Y'all don't seem to understand any responsibilities of the funding that the education needs, the sheriff needs, but you're willing to give executives, higher-ups, big salaries and raises. In 1980, I voted for Ronald Reagan. I believe in the trickle-down theory of economics, but it seems like you guys believe in the trickle-up theory of economics, give all the guys raises. I think it was in 2005, I went to Mr. Garris because we had an individual that worked for the landfill, who I thought was embezzling money, to the tune of a half a million dollars, $515,000 to be exact, and there was never nothing in the paper about it. It was covered up in head. There was one little article written by Ginger Livingston, because it was something said during the minutes of the meeting. We have a jail that y'all remodeled, a wing of the jail that sits out there, it's been done for five years now. That money has just been sitting there, not being used, and that money could be used to fund education for our schools, the sheriff's department. And are we covering these things up, not letting the public know what's going on, what all these closed session meetings you have? Why not have open government, be more open? Education is important. My kids went to Pitt County schools here. The sheriff is an important individual in this county. He does a great job, and you can believe one thing, if I need to call somebody, I'm not calling Scott Elliott, I'm calling the sheriff. He makes a lot less money than Scott Elliott does, and you really need to look at the funding that we do here and what's important. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Nancy Colville.
My name is Nancy Colville, and my address is on file. And the first thing I want to do is thank the staff that received, or there was an attempt to give him, give them, a bonus. I have been involved learning about government since the early 80s, and I will say that these individuals deserved every dime, but I do want to say to them how much we appreciate you not accepting the bonus. That's all I'm going to say about that. But my, and I'm really not going to pick the budget apart because there's no need. We already know what's going to happen. I'm really here because I am upset about the way that this board has treated the sheriff of this county since he got elected. I need to remind you that, like this other lady said, he has the highest office in the county. He is elected by all the people of this county to go to the polls. You are elected by a district. I would like to see how many of you would be here time and again if you had to be elected by all the citizens of this county. I really would like to see that. I, you know, it's not, in my opinion, it's not that some employees of the county are overpaid. The issue in my mind is that the sheriff is underpaid. I have sat here, year after year, when you said to the employees, "One more time, do without, because there are so many needs." That's what you usually say to them, and they move forward and they give you, most of them, 100% of whatever their jobs are. But they are the first people that get cut off, so you can move on and build new programs and pour money wherever you think you need it. And, you know, this has to stop. This has to stop, because if you want to have good employees, you're going to have to give them a raise. That's all there is to it. And a bonus is fine. I don't have a problem with the bonuses. They were earned, but there was some resentment because maybe it was the wrong time. Maybe people are angry because they're not making ends meet anymore. You know, half a million dollars for the dogs? Give me a break. I mean, I'm sitting here listening to these teachers and these people that give their free time to the high school, and, you know, the need is there, we all know that. I listen and I see people standing here saying to you, you know, "We really need this many people in this department and that department." And you yourself say you need them, but you know, then you turn around and do something else. It's just not, not good. You need to start treating the sheriff with respect, because, you know, like the lady said, and I don't want to keep repeating, when the ships are down, that's what we need to look to. And $80,000 or $84,000 or $86,000, that's an embarrassing number. I had no idea until I read it in the Daily Reflector, how little the sheriff made. I couldn't believe it, because this lady went through and I wrote all the things that the sheriff is in charge of. That's amazing. The jail alone. You know, I was here years ago when that jail was built, and it was a disaster then. It was a disaster because it was built on a square footage basis, and they went overbore, and they had something, a room sitting there, a recreation, gymnasium, for years because it was too much. They went over budget. That was a big secret. Nobody really knows about that. That was a big secret, nobody really knows about that. And later on, we find out that that design of that jail takes more people to run than all the other jails. So that's something that sheriffs, in the future, had to deal with. There's a lot of things that the sheriff does that nobody knows about, and what I ask is that you treat him with the respect that you like for people to treat you with. You're not the top dog. He is the top dog. And I think, I think, I think you gave my drift. You know, I wasn't coming, because usually it's a waste of time, it's a done deal, these budget hearings are, but I just had to come, because I have sat here and watched that sheriff for four years take your condescending attitude, and it has to stop. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Francine Cook, and I'm a lifelong resident of Pitt County. And I'm here tonight to show my support for two categories of our county's most important servants. First being our protectors in the law enforcement of our county, not only our sheriff, but all employees of the department who put their lives in danger every day for us. It was very disturbing to learn our county is at such a low percentage for the sheriff's salaries across our state. Second, our group of educators, who influence our most valuable population, the future generation. We are losing teachers every day to other occupations, because they are discouraged, and they are not able to financially provide for their families. I trust our county commissioners to show their support and encouragement for those that serve us, the citizens of Pitt County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dill Jennings.
I'm Dill Jennings, and I just don't understand how y'all sit there and others make as high as they say, as 162 and more, and look down at others and think y'all are better than we are. That's not right. You're not better than we are. You shouldn't be getting paid as much as you are, you should be getting paid less. As they say, the sheriffs and the people should be getting paid more, and y'all should be getting paid less. That's the way I say it.
Diane Kulek? Sure. Kulek? Okay, thank you.
I'm Diane Kulek, and I'm, for what it's worth, past chairman of the Greenville Police Commission for four years. I'm really here tonight to speak for Neil Elks and all of your officers, and my take on this is, in life, there is nothing more important than the safety of your family, your spouse, your children, your grandchildren, and your friends. If one of the people in your circle, and I want each one of you to think, of somebody that means a lot to you, if you got a call that that person had been shot, or there had been a home robbery, or they were involved in a strong-arm robbery in a store, where would you be going for help? Neil Elks. Life all comes down to that minute, and if one of those things happened, when you're 80 years old, or whatever, toward the end of your life, that's going to be one of the most important things that ever affected you, or your family, or your close friends. Just think about somebody that means the world to you. So we all need mayonnaise at the grocery store, or bread, or other services, but when it comes down to things, really, the safety, and that's what you're providing. The county provides it, the city provides it, on all different levels. I mean, the state, all the way up to our government. And to have somebody like Neil Elks, who is the best, who came out of retirement because he loved Pitt County, and he loved that job, and he wanted to serve the people. Every single day that he goes out, that his men go out, whether it's Pitt County Sheriff's, not Associate, Pitt County, or even Greenville, every day that those officers go out on the street, they don't know what they're going to be faced with. And I think that is so vitally important. Neil Elks has been there for all of us. He's been creative with many, many initiatives. He's a very fine, honorable, knowledgeable, professional person. He has really tried to creatively help our whole community in every way he can, from the first day he took the job. And when raises are given, they're given for excellence, and how much the people go the mile to do the job that you're asking them to do. And I can't imagine anybody doing more for our county than he and his team do. So I guess I'm just asking you to really give his salary and the rest of the people that work for the sheriff's department another look. And I think you've heard that from everybody that's gotten up and spoke about this, that we all were appalled when we saw the figures and realized what other people in our state make on that level. It just is so important, and I guess, as some people said, I mean, I guess I'm putting in my words, it's, I mean, well, anyway, it's unbelievable. One more side note, economic development. When companies come here to look at Pitt County, they look at the conditions of education and safety, what kind of churches you have, all these different factors, because other counties are competing for the same business. You know, they single out a few, and then they go looking. But part of what they want is to know what kind of safety their employees will have when they come here. And you've got the best, right there. And I think you need to reward him and let him know how deeply the citizens feel about him and all of his officers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ashley Nicole Russell.
Hello, I'm Ashley Nicole Russell. I'm an attorney here in town, I'm also on the Animal Control Advisory Board. I just want to say thank you for passing the animal control ordinance and preemptively for the funding. I wanted to say again how vital the funding is to the success of both the ordinance and the shelter as a whole, and the safety of the residents. As you know, and we have discussed multiple times, it will finally get us to the level of functioning that matches the state guidelines that must be followed. Most of all, I just want to say thank you. All of you have been extremely patient, and you have been extremely open-minded. You have met with the citizens, you've met with me, and you've met with my board members, you've seen the bigger picture, you've looked past what was just in front of you, you've seen exactly what the numbers mean, what it means for the animal control officers, who have very mentally and physically grueling jobs, I cannot imagine. And you've put us at a level, you know, we've been behind in staff, and this funding finally gets us to where we're functioning, where the state says we have to be functioning. So I appreciate it. I appreciate all that you've done, and I know that your jobs are very difficult, and I'm very impressed with Pitt County as of late, and the progressive nature that we have been moving forward in a very progressive position in Pitt County. I'm new to the county relatively, three years, and so I'm happy to be here and to be in this movement. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, that's all we have signed up.
Is there anyone that did not sign up that desires to speak now?
Good afternoon. I'm Neil Elks, Sheriff of Pitt County. I'd like to start out by publicly apologizing to each of the board members. If my asking for you to reevaluate my job is an embarrassment, or made you feel uncomfortable, or you consider it harassment, I'm sorry that I may have made you feel uncomfortable. I've been, received a lot of phone calls, and maybe I handled it the wrong way, but I want you to, second note on that, is I want you to know that I did not solicit any support from the news, Daily Reflector, Channel 9, there are reporters, you can ask them. I didn't give them any information, I didn't give them the letters, I didn't give them anything. They come to me for a story. And I just want you to know that if I made you feel uncomfortable, I want to apologize to you for that. I felt like my asking for a, my job, my salary to be reconsidered was fair, and I apologize, I mean it from the bottom of my heart, if I made you feel uncomfortable, we all unfolded. And so obviously, there's a lot of public support here, and it feels like that the sheriff deserves better. I leave that up to you, I put that in your hands, and I trust you make the right decision. Now, I'd like to speak to the citizens of Pitt County that elected me as the sheriff. Regardless of what's been said and done the last couple of days, I continue to love my job, love serving the citizens of Pitt County, and will continue doing an excellent service to our, Ms. Ward, do I need to stop talking?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, Ms. Elks, I was trying to get some, an amount of money clarified, but you continue. I apologize.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
But I want the people of Pitt County to realize that I will continue doing my job, and I will be doing it excellent, like we have been doing. I'm not doing it for the money, I do it because I love serving the citizens of Pitt County, and God's put me in this position for a cause, and I will be here until that time's up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sheriff. We've got one more that wants to speak.
Allison, thank you for letting me add on. I'm not worthy of speaking after the sheriff, but after listening to everything tonight, I know you guys are being excellent stewards of the tax dollars, and you have difficult decisions, but I think you should increase the tax rate, help the teachers, help the sheriff, help the county employees. I think if you do a small surcharge, you would have a far better county than you have now. Why lose dedicated people, why get them so upset? Everybody here is really quite good. I think you guys have thick skins and excellent stewards, but why not put a surcharge on? I'll be happy to pay. Thank you.
Anyone else that desires to speak at this time? If not, we'll have a seven, eight-minute recess. I believe some, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry.
My name is Beth Sanchez, Maple Ridge Road in Greenville, and I want to let the citizens know of Pitt County, what the Board of Commissioners have done. In September, I started meeting with everyone before me, as well as the executive staff. They did not know me. I'm just a citizen, I was not with a group, but each one that I reached out to responded to me, and they listened. And it wasn't just me speaking. I was speaking for many citizens in the unincorporated area of Pitt County, that I knocked on their doors, along with my husband, stopped at countryside stores, and I became their voice. People who felt like that no one in the county listened to them, that we had people say, "No one's ever asked us our opinion." A lot of them were afraid to come here and speak. Again, they were scared of being rejected, and some were just afraid to speak out in public. So Billy and I took on their voices for them, to let them be heard. And I want the county to know that everyone before me has listened and gave us the time. They asked us questions, tough questions. Sometimes I felt like I was being run in a rabbit hole, but I have a little bit of fortitude, and I came up the other side. I did it based on facts, not only with what I was able to find, but also with help from the Animal Control Advisory Board, who listened to a citizen back in October, back with the Animal Control Director, Michelle Whaley, who met with me, with Lisa Overton, for over an hour and a half and two hours, about things that were going on in the county, and gave me direction. And it was from there that we were able to go from a grassroots movement to this board, everybody before me who listened. It has been on the radio, it has been in newspapers, it has been on television. There's been lots of opportunities for the citizens to be able to come before and to ask questions, and if anybody has any questions, I'm more than glad to answer them, I'm very open about that. I've sat here since September at every board meeting, I feel like I'm part of your family now, I'm going to miss not coming here anymore. But what, one thing that I have noticed that I would recommend for the board, I went to all the budget hearings, is I do have a question. Why doesn't each department come and speak periodically throughout the year? And to let the citizens know, as well as the board, what's going on with their department? And also, I would recommend, as I sat at the budget meetings, because it really affected me, as I listened to every department head come and speak, I believe that every department head should be required to be at every budget meeting, because then not only are they on, sometimes I believe people get insulated in their own world, and Pitt County has a big organization, that if they are there, and actually they are to listen to what's going on to the Department of Social Services, what's happening with the sheriff's office, what's happening with animal control and with the school system. I think there would be more understanding what each department is facing, and also what this board has to make decisions on. That's my recommendation. I am proud of Pitt County. I didn't know what it was going to be like when I started. It's been challenging, but it's been very rewarding, and I want the citizens to know that they do have a voice, and their commissioners do listen, and I thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? If not, we're going to have a seven or eight-minute, we've had to request for a break, so people's got to go outside, heal, and place. All right, we'll be back in a few minutes. Thank you, now we are back in session, I believe we've got one commissioner missing. He might have had to go a little farther than the rest of us, but he'll be back momentarily, and we'll resume our meeting. Sheriff, can you see if Dr. Johnson is out there?
He's there.
All right, thank you.
Oh, my God, don't tell him where he has a boy. He's not beating up any more citizens.
Are we on screen for everybody? Is it hooked up in the back? Okay. Thank y'all for waiting, we've had a pretty long night. I do want to make this observation. Tonight, you have seen what I consider government at its best. That's when you've got a group of citizens that come out and voice their opinion, and give you some foundation upon which to work. Be as it is, the decision might not be with your desire, but it is this, it gives you an opportunity to listen and to know what other people are thinking. We previously tonight voted on, before getting to that, I'm getting ahead of myself, no other ones having to speak on this issue about the budget. I declared the public hearing closed. Now, we voted previously on the other animal control ordinance, that was not a unanimous vote. That requires an additional vote to come back at a later date. That will be on June 16th. And I've always had this prerogative about... And I've always had this prerogative about my episode or how I feel. I think you need to think about things before you do them. So with that being in mind, with the board's permission, I'm going to delay further work on this budget until June the 16th. And at that time, and when I was trying to discuss this, trying to manipulate around to what I thought was justice and fairness, one member of the board said, "Well, we don't want to be a false hope in anybody. Nobody intends to do that." But it gives you an opportunity to observe what you've heard and incorporate it with what you already know. So we will have this, with this board's permission, we'll have this on June the 16th, that the date, Mr. Land, at 6:00?
Yes, sir. Regular meeting, 6:00 PM.
All right. Any further comments from any of the commissioners at this time? Neither of us. Any other second today? You ready to vote? Thank you for coming. Have a good night.